The regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2018, at, 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 uh, six thirty roll call.
Mayor Ella Huzas is absent and excused, Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
Commissioner Carr is also absent and excused.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Janet Tunnel, All Saints Episcopal Church. Please stand and remain standing for the, for the, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, to whom we must account for all our powers and privileges, continue to guide the people of the United States and this community in the election of officials and representatives, that by faithful administration and wise laws, the rights of all may be protected and our nation be enabled to fulfill your purposes. Send down upon those who hold office in this city of Tarpon Springs, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number twenty-two will, 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 uh, will, 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 uh, be deferred to the November thirteenth, um, regular session per Charter Section three H that requires a, a, a supermajority for, um, that kind of land purchase. We, we will now go to public comments on items that will not be on the agenda thi- this evening.
Good evening. I'm Chris Warwick.
Say your address.
Sixteen oh seven Lonesome Pine Lane, Tarpon Springs, Florida.
Thank you, Chris, and I'm Robin Sanger, thirty-six Eighta Street, Tarpon Springs. And Chris and I are here tonight to talk about an event that's coming up this Saturday. It's called Stone Soup. Do, you're Vanah White.
I'm Vanah White.
And, uh, there, it's also known as Small Town Big Heart. So it's a citywide event, very low-key, just to kind of showcase some of the cool things going on here in the city. And one component of it is the signature soup tasting at the depot, at the historic train depot. And, um, we have six restaurants participating this year, and the tasting menu is Original Mama Maria's will have Agvo Lemony Soup. Mmm. Bread and Butter Deli Chicken Soup, Andros Greek Grill Greek Bean Soup, Tula's Trailside Cafe Chicken Tortilla Soup, Yankee Bean Butternut Apple Bisque, and Mikanos will have their Lentil Soup. So, uh, we're excited to be able to have this day to share with the community. We're going to have American Legion Post Forty-Six will also be there with the Poppy Remembrance to represent veterans and, and to talk with veterans who may be coming by that day. Tarpon Arts works with us as well to support whatever event they have going on that night, which that night happens to be Will Ackerman, The Gathering Four Guitars, also an awesome event. And then we showcase Salipa Ratner. We do this in support with the Unitar and Universalist Church, Five G, Tarpon Arts, and the City of Tarpon Springs, all working together. So we invite everyone to come by Saturday at the depot from eleven to three, have some soup. We will have some celebrity soup servers there that day. Vice Mayor Banther will be there for a bit. Uh, Commissioner Kitka will be there for a bit, and I think Mayor Ella Huzas will be there. And I believe you're going to be busy, Commissioner.
I have that seafood festival, I'll be working.
Yes. I, I've heard, yes. So it's great when you think about our small town, Small Town Big Heart, how we can come together. And the, the motto of, of Stone Soup is sharing creates great plenty. So I hope to see everybody there and, um, and it benefits Peace for Tarpon and the Shepherd Center. So we've revived this with this, we ran this for four years in a row, about ten years ago, to benefit the Shepherd Center. And since then, Peace for Tarpon has come into existence, so we thought, well, we'll just work together on this. So that's what we're doing. So appreciate everyone who can come out that day and join us for a little bit of delicious soup and just visit with some of your neighbors and friends and get to meet people and all in all, I'd say, you know, gonna be a good deal. Thank you. Thank you.
That it? We will now go to our, to our, our proclamations. Uh, item number one i- is Veterans Day. Commissioner Kikta.
Thank you. Proclamation, whereas our veterans represent the very best of America, they have bravely answered the call to serve in the finest military force in the world, and they have earned the dignity that comes with wearing the uniform and defending our great flag. And whereas on Veterans Day, we honor all Americans who have served in the Army, Navy, Air Force Marines, and Coast Guard, both in times of war and peace. And whereas Veterans Day gives us time to pay due respect to our veterans, and whereas we humbly thank our veterans and their families, as we remember, honor their service, and whereas on Veterans Day, we remember these heroes for their valor, loyalty, dedication, and encourage all Americans to recognize the fortitude and sacrifice of our veterans through public ceremonies and private thoughts and prayers. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Susan Kikta, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim November eleventh, two thousand eighteen, as Veterans Day. And I believe I'm accepting, well, we're going to be also bringing this to the Elks Lodge as well. Um, Chief, are you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll accept it.
Okay. I don't have a plaque. Oh, do you have the plaque?
That's for the next item or the third item.
Okay. And I will also be presenting this to, um, the Elks Lodge as well. Thank you. Is Major, Major Young isn't, not here. Major Young has taken over, um, so I'll let Chief talk about it. He's taken over this ceremony that we do at Craig Park and, um, since, uh, Tommy has passed away, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Kikta, Mayor Board of Commissioners, or Vice Mayor Board of Commissioners. This Sunday, November eleventh, eleven AM, we will be holding our annual services for our, our veterans at the War Memorial at Craig Park. The Elks Lodge is heavily involved and usually get a really good turnout, so, um, we would like for everyone to come out. It's a really nice ceremony. Like Commissioner said, Major Young has taken it over and, you know, it's really kind of blossomed from there, so, um, please come out and join us and, um, help pay respects to all of our veterans. Thank you.
And there's a, um, barbecue after the ceremony sponsored by the Elks Lodge there at Craig Park.
Yep.
And is there honor guard there as well?
Yes, uh, both police and fire.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any, are, are there any pu- pu- public comments at all? Any board comments? Item number two is Simeon Society, followed by a word that I can't pronounce, so Commissioner Seber.
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, proclamation, whereas the people of Simeon have always been instrumental in building the sponge industry and contributing to the creation of businesses and the civic community of Tarpon Springs. Whereas the Simeon Society Taxiahs of Tarpon Springs has contributed to the construction of Saint Nicholas Cathedral in Tarpon Springs, the Tarpon Springs Hospital, and other projects. And whereas the island of Simeon of the Dodikane Islands of Greece has entered into a city, cities, sister cities, cities affiliation with a sister cities, that's not easy to say, of Tarpon Springs. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs is honored and privileged to celebrate Feast Day of Archangel Michael with the Simeon Society Taxiahs of Tarpon Springs Panahidi style. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Seber, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim November eighth, twenty eighteen, as a day of celebration in honor of the eighty-fifth Simeon Society Taxiahs of Tarpon Springs Celebration of Archangel Michael. And this will be mailed.
Are there, are, are there any pu- public comments on this item? Are there any board comments? Alright. Item number three is first graduate Tarpon Springs Library Career Online High School. This will be presented by Carrie Ri- Rip, Rip Calvis, our, 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 our library director.
Thank you, Commission. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to talk about our Career Online High School program and to celebrate our first graduate, Danielle Hunsinger. I'd like to just tell, um, everyone about the Career Online High School program. It offers adults the opportunity to get an accredited high school diploma as well as a career certificate in their chosen field, all completely online. It's offered at libraries across the state and across the nation, and, uh, it's funded through the State of Florida for our, the libraries here in our state, and they have a chance not only to earn their high school diploma and transform their life that way, but also to be prepared for the workforce with a career certificate in the high-demand, high-growth field like office management, childcare, homeland security, customer service, there's a variety of different ones. And all people need to do to, uh, be able to apply for this program is to be an adult nineteen or over, to live in Pinellas County and have a library card through, um, the Pinellas Public Library Cooperative. Um, and if they don't have a card, they can apply and obtain one to do so. And, um, we are so excited to have our first graduate, as I said, Danielle Hunsinger. She, uh, has worked over a year and a half in this program. Uh, some, they do have the opportunity to transfer in credits if they've already earned credits, um, and she had to, uh, she wasn't able to transfer that many in, and she worked so hard in this program, we could not be proud of her. She's a Tarpon Springs resident, mother of three, and we're so excited to, um, acknowledge her for her achievement of, uh, graduating from the Career Online High School program and earning her career certificate in Homeland Security. Uh, and so I believe, uh, the Commission wanted to, um, award her a plaque.
You want, you, you, you want us to come around now, or?
Yes, yes, if we could, uh, give her the plaque and then take some photos.
Allegiance.
Okay.
A year and a half instead of four years, good to hear.
Yeah. Oops. And before we head over to the library, we're going to have a, a reception sponsored by the Friends of Library. They're going to be awarding Daniella Tablet to continue her, uh, education and, um, career studies. Uh, Daniella would like to say a few words.
First, I would like to thank the Most High and my ancestors for the strength within me. Also, the library staff for the opportunity they have given me, which was to achieve my high school diploma. Next, I want to thank my mother and father for lending me an ear when, and cheering me on when my lower self had the best of me. Last but not least, I want to thank myself for accomplishing something that I thought I couldn't achieve while becoming my higher self. Now I'm speaking to whomever needs to hear this, especially my children and my nieces and nephews. Don't let anyone or thing determine who you are, only you can do that. Your brain is your weapon, that's how you fight back. Remember, knowledge is power. Thank you.
Are, are there any pu- are there, are there, are there any public comments?
Well done.
Hearing none. Uh, Commission comments, I just want to say, um, I wasn't aware that we had this program. I, I, I think it's fantastic, and I think better yet that we allow them to specialize in the area to then go on and, 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 and get a trade. So I think that, that's just amazing, and that we have to here in Tarpon. We need to, uh, advertise this more. I think there's many, uh, working adults here that could take advantage of this. And congratulations to our, to our, to our, to our, to our, our, our graduate tonight. That was not easy, especially being, 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 being a mother and working, so all, all, all the best to you and the example that, uh, that you have set. Commissioner Seber.
Yeah. I echo, uh, Vice Mayor Banther's, uh, comments. Danielle, it's amazing that you could do this in a year and a half instead of four years, like most people, uh, do, uh, through, uh, high school, and to also come out with a certificate, um, and, and a field that you're interested in. So congratulations, and yes, we do need to, uh, make this program more, uh, aware and available, um, so others, uh, in, in Tarpon know about it, so, um, congratulations.
Thank you. I just, you know, I echo my Vice Mayor and my fellow Commissioner here, their comments, and I just want to say, you know, I wasn't aware we had this program either, and I think this is just fabulous. I just hope she's the first of many more to accomplish their goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we will go on to our, to our consent agenda. That's items four through, through fourteen. Are there any items that, uh, that y- you would like to pull? Commissioner Seber, Commissioner Kikta. Hearing none. Are there any, are there, are, are, are there any public comments on these items four through, uh, through, uh, through fourteen? Seeing none. The Chair will, will, um, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. I'm sorry, comments? Any comments? No. Um, a roll call.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Okay. We'll now, we'll, we'll now go on to our special consent agenda. Item number fifteen, Select Icon Consulting Group Incorporated for, uh, RFQ number one eight zero one four seven dash S dash JJ Stormwater Engineering Services Continuing Contract, City Manager.
I'll turn over, Robertson.
Good evening, I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. Uh, with this item, we're requesting the Board's approval of a new five-year stormwater continuing contract to provide engineering services by Icon Consulting Group. Icon was selected through a competitive process and was the highest-ranked firm. Funding for services will be provided primarily through the Public Works Department, Streets and Stormwater Division, and Public Works Director Tom Funtzen is here tonight if you have specific questions about the so- stormwater program. But that's basically it in a nutshell, and I'm here for questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are, are, are there any public comments? Seeing none. Are there, are there any Commission comments?
No comment.
None. The Chair will, will, um, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Item, item, item number sixteen, approve execution of agreement with FDEP for grant funding for lease and construction of spoil site for Ankle River, River Dredge Project, City Manager.
Mr. Robertson will give the presentation.
Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director again. For this item, we're requesting the Board's approval for the City Manager to execute an agreement between the City and the State of Florida. This, through this agreement, the State will provide up to six hundred seventy-six thousand dollars and forty-six dollars in grant funding for the Ankle River Dredge project to be used for the lease and construction of the spoil site. Uh, no city matches required. The funds will be paid to the City on a reimbursement basis, and I will serve as the Grant Manager for the City and will oversee the reimbursement paper trail. Uh, the City Attorney has reviewed the contract language, and that's essentially the summary of this item, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any, are, 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 are there, there, are there any public comments at all? Um, I just want to say thank you, Bob, for your continuing efforts on, on this. This was a long time coming. And I know we had a backup plan in place, but it's always nice to have the State participate. And on this election night, I hope people re- re- remember those that helped us with that, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Seber?
Yes, I just want to thank you too. I'm, I'm so happy we're finally starting to move forward on, on this project because it has been a long time coming, and you've been persistent in your, in your work, and thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Kikta?
Um, again, I echo my fellow Commissioners here. Thank you, Bob, for your hard work on this and everybody involved, um, to secure these funds for us.
Thank you.
I will, I will, I will en- entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Item number seventeen, approve execution of agreement with, with, uh, with, with, with Duke Energy for, for installation of electric vehicle charging station, City Manager.
Yes, uh, this is something we've been working on for a while, and on there too is Bob Robertson. For the third time, he's dominating the special consent agenda, but, um, to bring you something, uh, I think very important that, uh, the City's been wanting to do and come to fruition with Duke Energy, so turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mark. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. I don't think I've ever had special consent all to myself in one night. So with me tonight is Peter King. He's a Project Manager with the Electric Transportation Division of Duke Energy. And I'm really pleased to bring this item forward to you tonight. We are requesting the Board's approval for, um, the City Manager to execute a contract with Duke Energy. Uh, under this contract, Duke would provide, under their new, uh, park and plug program, uh, they will be installing eight new electric vehicle charging ports at four public locations, so two ports at each location. The four locations are City Hall, the Splash Park slash Dog Park, the Public Library, and the Recreation Center. These charging stations will be installed at no cost to the City and will be maintained by Duke Energy through the end of two thousand twenty-two, as outlined in the contract that was provided in your backup. Power to these charging stations can be offered for drivers to charge their electric vehicles for free or for a fee, the option of which can be decided at any time, um, as the infrastructure and billing system will be in place when the installation is complete. At the end of the contract term, at the end of two thousand twenty-two, Duke may transfer ownership of the equipment to the City at no cost and with no warranties. The City Attorney has reviewed the contract language, and as I mentioned, Peter King is here for any technical questions you may have pertaining to Duke's program.
And just to add to that, uh, to get this project going, get it promoted and stuff, it, it would be my recommendation that we offer it free to begin with, and hopefully, you know, maybe we can do, we'll see the cost and stuff, but this is our part of what we want to do in our sustainability plan, so at least for the beginning and through the process. It was good to learn, usually you have to make a decision, it's, it's good to learn that these machines can go either way and can be switched in any time and stuff, but as our part to the community and stuff, uh, we'd like to do these. I know there's been some questions about where we chose. We got to remember that these take up three parking spaces, so we had an inquiry about why didn't we put one at the Marine or why we put these places, um, again, there are the places, uh, Mother Meers Park, the Marine and stuff, losing three places, all you know from the ceremony yesterday, and when you're down there in the places, all of those are problems. I know three places at the library are pressure too, but just to start this program, as though we didn't want to make an impact where the areas where there's intense parking, so that's why we're, that's why we chose these as the best places. Plus, we want to be close to either Altar Nineteen or Nineteen, easy for vehicles to get to there and kind of spread out through the city, try to spread out as much we could on city facilities and stuff. I don't know if you want to mention about the other possibility, possibly some other places going, you want, do you want to talk about that now, or?
If you'd like, sure. The, um, and what you're talking about is some other private partnerships that Duke is looking to do, and Peter can elaborate a little bit, he's here.
Just a little bit to know that there may be a couple more of these offered, the residents in our city at some, at some private locations too, so we will have a lot of them throughout the city to encourage, again, the use of electric cars and, uh, or for the value that it has, so. I'm saying anything.
Oh, um, did you want to mention anything about the other sites that we're looking at?
Well, uh, on behalf of Duke Energy, first of all, thanks for being part of the program and being interested in, in bringing electric transportation. It's coming at us in a, in a big way. So, yeah, we're excited about Tarpon Springs, um, and their interest, and we also have talked to Bob, we would love to have some private businesses as well interested. We've got other types of charging and certainly, um, are more than willing to work with some of these groups around Tarpon Springs, get some more infrastructure in place.
And again, I want to thank you, because when, when we started this project, we were hoping, we were hoping to get one or two of these, um, to get four of them and be able to place them in where we have to get four is just absolutely great and beyond our expectations. So I want to thank Duke Energy, um, for being able to give us four stations to place throughout the city, um, so thank you very much.
Are there, are there, are, are there any, are, 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 are there any public comments on this item? None? I, um, I, I, I ju- I just, I, I just want to say, I think this is, this is a, 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 a great idea. I know we've had, um, people come out recently wanting more green initiatives, and Marx I know has, has been working on those since before I was elected even, with solar and whatnot, so I think this, this, this is a, 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 a great step forward. Definitely won't, won't, won't power my truck, but I know people that will benefit from it, and I hope we can get more af- af- after the install. Commissioner Kikta? I mean, sorry, um, uh, Seber?
Yes. Thank you very much. I appreciate, uh, you coming out from Duke and, and of course, Bob. Uh, when do you think the installation will be completed?
So, uh, with execution of the contract, um, we'll move forward. It usually takes about thirty to forty-five days, just depends on what kind of conditions we'll, we'll run into. What we'll do now is a formal site assessment, we'll have a contractor come out, look at the locations, the panels, and those kinds of things. Um, they'll go through the permitting process, and let's hope thirty to forty-five days we've got some charging stations ready to roll.
Right. Two, three months. That's fantastic. Definitely much needed, and a lot of people have been talking about us becoming more sustainable in, in the city, and, and this is a step towards that, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you, and, um, I am so happy to hear that we're finally moving forward with this, like, something I've been asking for, for a few years now, and, um, you know, our city is moving in a new direction and more, and we are more, trying to be more sustainable, so this is a great step. Um, I, and one of my questions was to the City Managers today, I was, you know, trying to figure out why these spots were chosen for the stations, and, and he did explain to me the parking issues, you know, we will take up some parking spaces, so, you know, I was hoping to maybe see something in the Train Depot parking lot, or, um, I don't know if we can do one at the beach or not, but, but down the road, maybe we, something we can consider. Um, I did have a question, though. Will there be signage around town, uh, to direct people with cars?
Yes, we plan, we plan to do that. That's why, again, we want to make sure, one of the things in Duke Energy one or two was the main routes, Altar Nineteen and Nineteen, so, yes, we do plan to put signage and let people know directionals to make it to all four of the places and stuff.
Okay.
And we'll be coming also.
Yeah, that, that would be real helpful. And my other question is, are these ever, um, powered by solar? Or how are they, so, right now, the stations are powered by electric, correct? Are they ever powered by solar?
You can do that, yeah. We've, we've had installations that are, are powered by solar. There are a, a few of those around the country, yeah. I think OUC down in Orlando has one in their, uh, employee workplace.
Do they? So is the, um, is it something that we've looked at or considered here?
Not really for this project.
No?
I don't know that we have, um, have that as part of the.
Yeah, our project, our part of the proj- project is not solar, it's connected, um, but you can do solar with the EV charging stations, that is possible.
Yeah, what our plans is, this is a start, and again, we thought would maybe one or Yeah, what our plans is, this is a start, and again, we thought would maybe one or two as a start, four as a start is great.
I was surprised to see.
But again, we plan on going forward either with grants or ourself in doing them, and as we add some and do that, that's what we'll look into doing and stuff. But this doesn't plan to be, this is a good trial, we'll watch this a year or two and look at the expansion. Again, Sunset Beaches, places like that to put them would be the places that either another grant is available or we just, you know, we budgeted and do it ourselves with the success of this, so that's the plan. This is the start, and then to branch out and do that, and we will be looking at solar, especially a place like the beach where we know it'll get the sunlight and stuff, some of the places, you know, we know it'll get there. So definitely, we'll look at those locations where we can be powered by it. That's what we look for for our future expansion of this project.
Great, well, again, thank you so much. Appreciate this.
Chair will enter a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Item number one, discussion plaque recognizing past city officials for the auditorium, and that's my item. I talked to Mark after consulting with the city clerks about a way to, you know, we're always trying to honor our past. I think all of us campaigned off that in silence, though in some way, shape, or form. And we've had so many past elected officials, I know we have the mayor's pictures out in the hallway, and we now have much to my dismay, our personal pictures in the water bill section and out here and upstairs. But I think it'd be really nice to have some sort of a large plaque on the wall that is just a small little nameplate for every past commissioner, city clerk, and city manager. Though when I talked to Mark, he said the funds are easily available in our awards budget. And just, I would, you know, I'm not too set on where it goes, but I think somewhere here in the auditorium where we meet would be nice, and just a very nice way to honor past people like us that have come here before. Because, as you know, as the years go by, names can be forgotten, and we still have some people living today that were city commissioners back in the seventies. So I want to get board input, obviously, we have two people, you know, absent tonight, I want to get their input as well. But I don't know if you all had anything to add on that, what your thoughts were on that, so.
Well, thank you. I think that's a great idea. We do have a lot of former mayors and commissioners and vice mayors who, you know, I think would be nice to have them honored, and so, yeah, good idea, I'm for it.
I think it's a great idea. Yes, I would support you on that.
Okay, and I will work more with the city clerks and Mark as far as, you know, there was discussion, do we do it alphabetically, which I think would be problematic? Or, you know, I think starting in, you know, back to the first service and on, and some way that's easy and affordable to maintain. And also, I think it'd be a nice addition too for the Citizens Academy when they come here for Arts and Culture Night, that they can see that board and all those names. So I'll work further with Mark on that, and then hopefully get it done before I'm out of here in April, so. Thank you. Okay, are there any public comments on the side? Hearing none. We'll go to ordinances and resolutions, item eighteen, ordinance twenty-eighteen dash twenty-five, application eighteen dash one-one-two, special area plan modification, SDC second reading, city manager.
Yes. Other a while, we'll give this presentation.
Want me to go ahead and read the ordinance?
I would appreciate that if you don't mind.
Ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending certain sections of Appendix B Community Redevelopment Area and Sponge Docks Smart Code of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, by amending table four E subsection I, building function, by allowing forty-nine seats for food service establishments and transects where retail use is limited, amending table five A code summary to change the building function from limited to open in the SDC transect, and amending table five B subsection six, SDC marine industrial slash commercial to change the building function from limited to open and providing for severability and for an effective date, published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on September twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, and October twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen.
This is a second reading, and there's been no additional information since first reading. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any public comments? Go forward, you have four minutes, please state your name and address.
Pat Borowick, twenty-six oh four Oak Circle, Tarpon Springs. And Jex Burke has said that he will give me his two minutes from him if I should need it. I don't think I will, but I might.
Duly noted.
I wrote to all of you a couple of weeks ago about my response to this, and I thought I would just comment here in the open forum, in case anybody hearing it or watching the video might have some suggestions that my thoughts might bring forth from them. Unless I'm missing something here, I think changing the designations of these three areas from restricted to open could be a really good thing. The city has a wonderful opportunity to solve some existing problems in this area and create a waterfront that is beautiful and more accessible to more visitors, including the residents of the city. You must be aware that such a change to the docks area requires financial investment by the city to create both an attractive area and ease with which to move about it. Do we, do I, do we have the money to do that? And are we planning for that money in our future budgets? What are your plans on paper for these areas? The response to those questions can't be, well, first, we've got to get the modifications in place, and then we can plan what we want to do. That may be too late. You may be already started a free-for-all that will create a jumbled mess, which you have to deal with later at much greater expense. The following are some suggestions, which, if you don't like them in their entirety, might generate some ideas for you. The first one is, solve the parking problem that already exists there, and will be made much worse with this proposed change if you don't proactively address it. Asking current business owners to share what limited facilities they have is frankly, an unfair, unrealistic sidestepping of something that could doom this project before it's even realized. You need to take two facts into account in solving this problem. A, a business can't share parking space it either doesn't have or doesn't have enough of, so I suggest you forget that idea. B, the people who are now drawn to the docks and that will be in the future are primarily retired or middle-aged folks. The parking areas the city must create have to be a realistic distance from where you want them to spend their money, or shuttle service must be provided. Two, encourage restaurants of varying cuisines for varying tastes and locate them on the water. When people are in retail shops, they're looking at the merchandise and not the scenery. As for those new shops, look for shop owners who want to sell something other than soap, shells, sponges, and T-shirts. The many that already sell those items on the docks don't need any more competition. Third, and this is a biggie, and I believe is very important to the future success of the docks, there are too few places to sit along those docks. What few there are are next to a steady stream of traffic and plunked down on hot concrete. How many times have you heard, "I'm hot, I'm tired, I'm sick of people bumping into me, we'll find some other place to go and eat, let's get out of here." And I've heard that in any number of tourist places for the same reasons. Also, when I've asked folks who are visiting me for the first time if they'd like to go to the docks, and I tell them they're still functioning docks where people shrimp, fish, crab, and go out for sponges, their faces light up and they're eager to go. This change should not disturb businesses that make this a working dock area. If those businesses are succeeding, they should continue to exist and succeed uninterrupted. But once there, there's very little opportunity for guests or anyone else to see any of that, unless you're able to get a table on the railing at Rusty Bellies, and that's what I usually try to do for the guests that I have. Here's what's needed, and here's where the city's second opportunity comes in. Help businesses create and maintain a shaded river walk behind the seawall, I assume, that we're going to have to raise, given the current and future flooding down there, with treeed pocket parks along the way interspersed between the restaurants. By pocket parks, I mean places with some grass, peanut grass, which is easily maintained, those trees for shade, and just three benches set up like a three-sided rectangle with the open fourth side on the water end. Where there's a functioning boatyard, et cetera, bring that walkway back up to the main drag so they don't, we don't interfere with the work that makes the docks the docks, but we can still see them as we're walking. Please give this change, which could result in a beautiful as well as financially advantageous area, some serious and prolonged thought, some planning ahead for what you think could be, it could be, and what you want it to be. The changes are given two readings for a reason, and that reason is not to automatically approve something on the second reading if that contemplated change is not fully hatched. Take all the time that's needed, slow down. This is an important change, which will have a lasting effect on the docks, a most crucial part of our city, for the worse or for the better, which I and I hope you can foresee. Thanks.
Any other comments? Seeing none, are there any commissioner comments? I'm sorry, I want to back. Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Corinne Young with River Energy Fuel on the Sponge Docks in Tarpon Springs. I'm hoping this is a positive situation as well. It just, we were just told about this, we weren't aware of any change. Obviously, we are in a restaurant, we do not provide any seafood, but we do have the marine fuel industry and whatnot. And we want to make sure, we've been in this business since nineteen thirty-seven, long before a lot of any other businesses were here. We're a fourth generation, and I'd like to know that we aren't in any kind of threat situation or things being done behind our back, previously done. If people could just be upfront with us, we're willing to make certain changes, but we are fuel, we are fuel docks, and we mind our own business, we do our own thing. And I'd just like everything to be upfront, so we understand what's going on. Because seating arrangements don't really apply to us, we need the marine, as the previous lady was saying, we need the marine to stay, and with the dredge, which was a thankful thing to go through, we're hoping more shrimp boats and other grouper and fishing industry will come back to the area as it used to be, so flourished, along with the sponge boats and other. We have a very unique environment, and we think it's, we have dinner boats that come to us, we've had celebrities on our dock. We're quiet because we don't put ourselves out in the limelight, but we have a lot of things going on too, and positive things in the area. So I'd like to just be respected, you know, we aren't a merchant and we aren't a restaurant, but we are very tight-knit in the community. So I just hope this is a positive thing for us. We do have some concerns because we want to stay there, and our next generation is coming in behind us. So we don't want any to be forced out. And I need to know that we have some security. If we could get some answers, I'd greatly appreciate that because the rezoning isn't anything that any of us in that whole area knew about or requested. I understand that a lot of it can be a positive thing, but as you can imagine, you probably know where our facility is, and with nine eleven and whatnot, unfortunately, we had to, we were forced to put fencing up around the whole facility and whatnot. We used to have art clubs and life was much easier, you know, twenty years ago. But we enjoy it there, and we have a lot of, we had Relay for Life events, we helped Julie, you know, Rusty Bellies, and we're part of the community in a quiet way. And we're always open for suggestions for change, but we're kind of locked in with our industry. I was just concerned because we aren't, you know, a food server at this point, and we are not, not to say there's not options for that in the future. And we are not a merchant, so to speak. We're considered a wholesale jobber, but again, our longevity here speaks for itself. We made it through a lot of tough times, including BP and whatnot, so we're hoping our community stands behind us and, you know, keeps us informed and appreciates, you know, and if you have any ideas or suggestions or, do you think this in any way would ever put us in a bad position, this change of rezoning?
I'm going to have staff.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to have staff respond after public comment.
Okay, okay, okay. I started to speak after, but I've never spoken, so, okay. But anyway, but thanks for the Anklud dredging thing, that's amazing, that's going to help every kind of voter there is, so I really appreciate everything, and I did vote today. It makes a big difference, so I appreciate everything you all do, and, all right, thank you.
Are there any other comments, public comments? None? Heather, could you address, I know you can't, I mean, you can talk to her privately afterwards too, but in a generic fashion, address if someone's grandfathered in or any concerns that this person should have it from River Energy?
So this particular district, the district that we're talking about, allows for marine and industrial uses. Those marine industrial uses are not being addressed at all. Those marine industrial uses are allowed today, will be allowed tomorrow if this passes. The only thing that this is doing is changing to open up the opportunities for properties that are down there and for property owners down there to provide for additional restaurants if they choose to or to allow for retail at a larger scale than what had previously been allowed. But the commercial and industrial uses that are oriented towards marine development are not changing. They would still be the same today, it just offers them a different opportunity. That's.
Question, Seber?
Yes, thank you, Heather. Yeah, I'm glad you made that clear. That will not change, you know, what your business is down there or any of the businesses. It is, like Heather said, giving other developers or business owners down there that own businesses to develop more on their own properties. And so you don't have to worry about that. I liked some of the suggestions that the other lady had, and that's, you know, maybe something we can talk about in the future. But this rezoning right now is only what's on the agenda, and I'm definitely for it.
Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. In our last meeting, we had some concerns from some of our restaurant owners down there, and I'm assuming, Heather, that that's been cleared up.
Karen's talked to them.
Okay, I'm just, you know, and I know, I think they got some misinformation, and it's unfortunate, it kind of stirred things up a little. But from what I'm hearing, they're okay with everything.
Yes, we're used to that, and Karen went out, made sure and ensured all of them and talked to them and reminded them about tonight, obviously, with three weeks between meetings, we had time to contact them.
Right, and none of them have come back, so I'm assuming that they're fine with all the, with the change.
Certainly, this is going to make an improvement for one particular business that is down there that, should they want to do any changes, it's going to make them a legally conforming use, which is going to make it easier for them to make the changes that they would want as they grow.
Right, and, you know, we just, we don't want to change the character down there whatsoever, that's not what this is about. We all know how important the Sponge Docks are to us and it's an attraction, and this is to enhance and to make the Sponge Docks better. Thank you.
I will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Item nineteen, resolution twenty-eighteen dash twenty-four, applications eighteen dash one oh three and eighteen dash one oh four, knit, kneel, partner, site plan review, and conditional use. This is quasi-judicial, city attorney?
This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Orde- that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the commission wishing to disclose any expertake communications or conflicts, conflicts of interest regarding this application this evening? Seeing none. Uh, anyone wishing to speak with regards to this application, if you could please stand and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn. This is resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-four, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, modifying resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-two by approving application eighteen one oh three and eighteen one oh four, requesting a conditional use permit and associated site plan approval modification to allow for construction of eighty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-seven square feet of mini warehouses and three buildings consisting of six hundred and ten units on property zone highway business located on the west side of US nineteen, approximately eighteen hundred eighty feet north of the intersection of East Klosterman Road and US nineteen north, providing for findings, providing for conditions, providing for modifications that may arise at the public hearing, and providing for an effective date. Staff presentation?
Thank you. Um, this application was, uh, heard back in January and approved. Um, it's out on nineteen. It's adjacent to the Los Mexicanos Restaurant and an existing multi, um, multi, mini storage facility. That's the public storage facility. Essentially, what this modification is, is about the main building, Building B, that is the large, um, built, the largest of the three buildings there, is being broken up in a different configuration. The resolution, um, that we previously approved had the number of units static for that specific, um, number that they provided to us. They have since, um, decided to kind of break up the, and, and configure the space a little bit differently, so they're asking for additional units. Essentially, they're going from, um, the five sixty-four to six-ten. They have sufficient parking based on a parking variance that they were granted by the Board of Adjustment. They're currently in construction. Um, the other modification that they've asked for is the rear building that had been originally one building is now been separated into two buildings. So there's three buildings on the site instead of just two. Um, those are the two modifications on here. Staff is recommending approval. Um, the Planning and Zoning Board heard this and there were no concerns with this. There was no public, um, participation for this. There's been a sign out on the, on the property for well before the fifteen days. Um, and we have not heard anything for anybody concerned other than people just want to know what's happening on that site, which is a great thing. So, um, the engineers of record is here if you have any questions. Um, but really, that's what the modification is about. We're just basically changing, reconfiguring space inside the existing building. The square footage doesn't act, actually changing. Um, it's remaining the same.
Are there any board, uh, board questions for staff?
Just, uh, thank you to, to, well, I guess, yeah, 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 I, I, I guess we can. I just, I just want to say, I think that, that this is a, 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 just great project. It's appropriate for, for the area, uh, and I, I, I think it's a good use of that space.
Any board questions for staff?
No, I just also, I, I drive by there and I see the construction going on and, and it's great to see that going up there. It is needed and as Vice Mayor Banther said, it's a, it's a great area to have that development happen. So, uh, thank you.
Does the applicant have any questions for staff or wish to make a presentation? Okay. Are there any questions of the board, of the, are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public for the application? Any members of the public wishing to speak against the application? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Any, 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 any more comments?
No.
I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Item number twenty, resolution twenty-eighteen dash twenty-six, Public Works reorganization, City Manager?
Yes. Um, both these items, item twenty and twenty-one, are the result of longtime employees, at least in one case, of being gone. So these are some that may have been brought to you in the future, but because we've had employees leave and we need to refill these positions, this is an opportunity to, to, to look at the needs of the position and, and before we put out to advertise them, changes. So the first one, uh, Mr. Funchen will talk about in his thing, and again, he'll tell you about the opportunity with, with some employees retiring and what he plans to do for the benefit of our workforce.
Uh, good evening. Tom Funchen, Public Works Director. Uh, as a result, the, up, two upcoming retirements, uh, the, the position request I'm asking for is to reclassify a parks technician, number two, uh, to a heavy equipment operator, paid grade ten. Having a third heavy equipment, I'm sorry, party, reclassifying parks technician, paid grade eight, to a heavy equipment operator, paid, paid grade ten. As we transition from general labor, we're getting, becoming more into the heavy equipment and specialized equipment, a higher level of personnel will be required. In the yard waste, we're asking to reclassify yard waste technician two to a heavy equipment operator, paid grade ten. Having a third heavy equipment operator in our yard waste will allow us for better coverage and, and full service of facility, which is open six days a week. Our three employees will, in the vision, will now be able to work all aspects of the yard waste, and also gives me some freedom for heavy equipment operators in other departments. Uh, there'll be no impact on the budget because these positions are being vacated by long-term employees, uh, we're at, at the top of their pay range. So there'll be no impact on the budget as, as of now. That's pretty much it. I'm open for questions.
No, uh, thank you, Tom. I, I trust you know what you're doing and, and it won't be changing the budget, uh, with the retirement of these, uh, men. So, um, thank you. I, it sounds like a good idea to me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Um, I know that we were in need of heavy equipment operators, so this, I think, is, will, um, will help quite a bit, especially at the yard waste facility. I know we were short for a while. I think we had one guy, so this, this is def, this definitely will help. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are, are, are there any public comments? Seeing none? Uh, the, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Item number twenty-one, resolution twenty-eighteen dash, 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 dash twenty-seven, um, procurement services reorganization, City Manager?
Yes, again, it's one of the same, similar situation with Mr. Jackett and Procurementist. Um, just give a brief description of what you're trying to do. Again, this is another one that's not going to have a budget impact due to the fact that the person's been here, um, for a few years before they left. So, uh, just a quick, simple explanation, kind of a similar situation, where we have an opportunity with, uh, a person leaving and going out to advertise to get a little bit higher of a skill position.
Jay Jackett, Procurement Services Director. Uh, the two remaining employees, uh, will have, being retired within two years. Uh, Kathy Morgan has got a year left. Uh, myself is two years. Uh, and I'm basically hoping to hire my replacement, uh, rather than advertise the lower position. If we increase it by the one step, uh, they both bas, basically do the same job. Uh, so that's basically it. I'm just trying to hire my replacement and not leave Mark in the, in the lurch when I go.
Right. Are there, are there any public comments? Well, thank you for being, uh, very for, forward-thinking and helping us replace you for your retirement, which I'm sure you're, you're, you are, you are look, looking forward to.
Thank you.
Uh, the, uh, question receiver?
I didn't know Kathy was retiring in a year.
Well, maybe sooner if we go with the, uh, RFP for the insurance.
So, uh, and I'm sorry to see you leave too, but, uh, no, it makes sense. And, yeah, like, uh, Vice Mayor said, thank you for being proactive and thinking in, in advance about your replacement and Kathy's.
Yep. All right. The Chair will, will, will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Item, item number twenty-two ha, ha, uh, has, has been deferred. So this, so this concludes the, 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 uh, regular session agenda. Staff comments, Police Chief?
Uh, no comments. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
City Attorney?
No comments.
City Manager?
No, sir.
Ma, um, Madam Clerk?
Comment.
Comments. Mayor's absent. Um, I'll go last. Commissioner Seber?
Uh, well, first I want to, uh, congratulate Commissioner, uh, Carr and his wife on the birth of their new little baby girl. Uh, so congratulations to them. Also, this weekend is the seafood festival on the Sponge Docks. It's an annual event that's very popular, so I'm hoping to see a lot of you out there. And I think the opening of the Community Garden is on Saturday. Am I correct? Mark?
Thursday.
Oh, is it Thursday? Okay.
Thursday.
Well, that's coming up on Thursday then. Uh...
A community garden dedication.
Our ribbon cutting or gala for our, our Community Garden, uh, on one-one-six Ring Street. So, uh, I've been looking forward to that. Thank you.
Um, uh, uh, the, the, uh, the, the, Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. Um, I just want to remind everybody that, um, the Elks Lodge will be having, um, their yearly Veterans Day, um, barbecue after our ceremony at Craig Park at eleven o'clock on the eleventh, November eleventh, Sunday, at eleven.
Thank you. Um, again, like, um, well, like we said, I want to wish, um, Commissioner Carr on, uh, the congrats on, 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 on his new baby girl. I think they were supposed to come home from, 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 from the hospital today. I remember those, 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 those days, and I'm sure he's anxious to get, to, to, to get home. We also wish the, the mayor, the mayor, um, uh, so, some, 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 some good health. For him to miss a meeting and him being in the country is, this is the first time it's happened. So, um, I, I have no further comments, so we, we will adjourn at, uh, seven-thirty-one.